I'm here. Meeting to order. And turn my microphone on so you can hear me. We have agenda, agenda in front of us with already a couple of changes that I have. C1 has been deleted. No delegation this evening. Under correspondence, we have G2, emergency management letter. And I also have an H6, strategic planning session wrapper on DigiCloud. An H7, African heritage table. And we do have an in-camera this evening as well. That's all I have. Is there any other addition or additions from the floor? Your in-hand, motion to approve the agenda is amended.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Appreciate it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Moving right along, we have minutes from the previous meeting to 7/16/2024. Have a chance to review those. And if there's any changes or omissions or additions, now is your chance to have that amended. Nothing, all right. Looking for consensus for the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a consensus, minutes are here. Now, business arising from the minutes, under business. If it pleases the committee, would you like to deal with E1 to E4 as a group? As they are all letters outgoing for your information from subjects we have spoken about? Or would you like to take them as Digi?
I'm okay with them all together. You have a mission.
Okay. Do you have a chance to read through those correspondence? Basically, just so that we had asked as a council that we didn't know if they had gone out or not in response as we requested, so Leslie's been good enough to add them to our agenda to make sure you know that they went out and what they said. So those are all in there as well. There is one other matter of business after those. E5, the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators, CANA. As you recall, we discussed our CAO joining that organization. And I'm happy to report that he has joined. And a little break on his dues, they're not due for years, Tom?
Yeah, for a whole year. And was this guy?
All right. Okay, wonderful. Perfect. From that, we'll move on to F1, the Chief of Administrative Officers Report.
New development officer for the previous month, there was no development permits issued. Development agreement for the Thomas Road project has been drafted and noticed that they posted on town's website and Facebook page. We have been notified by the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board that they have received an appeal and has assigned a file identified as M12061 Development Proposal, Timpeck and All, Thomas Road, its number 30383731 and 30228522. I've notified the town's municipal council, who represent the town in this manner, currently unselecting contact information with the developer and town representatives to provide to the NSUA every. Although there were no development permits issued by the development officer in the last month, the duties of the development officer continue to take more time away from my CAO duties. This has become very stressful and frustrating that my duties of CAO and responsibility to the council have been affected. Building inspections. In the previous month, there is, there was one building from that issue, and that was at 111 Warwick Street to renovate apartments for our hotel in Lower End. Fire inspections, the following fire inspections were conducted, 14 Burke Street, followed by inspection, all, it was a follow-up inspection, all deficiencies have been corrected. 127 Third Avenue, apartment building, fire inspection, deficiencies, county owner has 30 days to correct or ask for an extension to correct the remaining deficiencies. If no action or extension is requested on behalf of the owner, an order will be issued by the fire inspector. Fire inspection appeals, there is an ongoing appeal filed with the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board, matter number M11944, Fundy Restaurant Limited. The town's legal counsel representing the town and its fire inspector in this matter. Hearings will be held February 25th to 27th, 2025, in Halifax. And that will be accompanying the fire inspector at this hearing. Fire department, fire department responded to six calls during the month of November, two, I think it was supposed to be December. It was December. Two alarm signee, one trailer fire, one chimney fire, and two mutual aid structural fires. Town calls were two, and the district calls were four. Office of the CAO, NBS LUV review, our planning consultant and I have started to review the direction given at the planning and budget committee meeting on public engagement. Based on the workload and limited resources of existing administrative staff, we feel the need to hire a facilitator who can help with all the organization of the public engagement sessions as well as facilitate them. Administrative staff will be assigned tasks as required. The planning consultant and I will be continuing discussing the PAC direction and seeking a facilitator. Legislative policies of council. The council meeting and perceived policy was renewed at the council planning team building session held on Saturday, December 7th. I was, I've been unable to complete a draft document for table that January committed the whole meeting for council's consideration. I'm hopeful that I'll have them completed for the February committee, the whole. Other legislative policies that will require review by council are policy 2004-03, citizen appointments to committees, commissions, and boards. Policy number 2008-01, council remuneration policy. Policy 2010-05, committees of the council. Policy number 2010-06, citizen advisory committees. Policy 2016-03, council staff regulation relations policy. 2017-05, deputy mayor policy. 2017-08, telephone and electronic calls policy. 2017-10, conference and professional development. 2018-01, audit committee terms of reference policy. 2020-03, community grants policy. 2020-04, council video conferences and teleconference policy. Policy 2021-01, council disposal of surplus property. And 2024-02, respecting the appointment of the property authority. I would suggest that a series of meetings we set up to discuss and review the policies separate from our, made the whole meetings.
Any questions for CAO?
Actually, Tom, the facilitator that you mentioned, that is specific to the public engagement? You need to hire a facilitator that's specific to the public engagement for the planning advisory committee?
Yeah.
That'd be on term position. It wouldn't be, I'm not talking before Tom's staff, on a term position to use the asset. So basically, we, but I'm sure contract takes, needs is advertised and that's version or firm that would do that for us on our.
Thank you. Any other questions from CAO?
Sure, should we set time now to start and review some of the legislative policies that you laid out there, Tom?
Well, that's, yeah, basically, but I mean, I think it needs to be at least reviewed by committees outside of our understanding committees, and then it will follow through to committee the whole, it'll be the first stop, and then council after the amendments are made.
Okay, then can I make a suggestion? We pick a, pick a date that we like to, to start, that gives you enough time to finish your reviews first.
Perhaps council board, we could make a set of time once a month, because there's quite a long list.
Yeah, that's true. Maybe if we ask Leslie what the calendar's looking like for the next, next few months, that might be the best way to get an ongoing date.
Three, a day or a night.
I'm sure I could commit an hour to, to pick a day. So maybe one, we have normal daytime meetings, so.
Four o'clock, quick four o'clock. Easy.
Four o'clock.
Monday, five.
Yeah, four or five, maybe Thursday, when it's five o'clock, maybe over Friday. That way it won't conflict with the executive or library or anything like that. What day is Waste Check on?
No, we're, we're just, that's on Tuesday. It's on Tuesday, but it's in the morning.
Okay.
That's February 6th.
February 6th is okay.
What day is that, Leslie?
February 6th.
Six?
Thursday.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and then maybe at that meeting we could follow up with the next.
Sounds good.
Okay, that sounds great. I guess now, just a number of questions, I'm looking for a motion to approve the CAO's report.
So moved.
Thank you, councillor. But councillor, we are, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Next is Director of Public Works.
There's no worry, Mark Porter there, so I can show everybody this, we can discuss the procedure management meeting. So what we're looking to do, we have our wayfinding signage for the fire hall, for town hall, for the churches and stuff. So we're looking to do some wayfinding signage for the businesses. So, there's a council opinion on whether we want to do a cost share of businesses, they purchase part of the sign, we can provide the posts, or we cover it all, the businesses will cover it all. What if we did? Oh.
Yeah, it's a PVC plastic. Inert.
So, so the top one is, this one here is the one we currently have, the design. So they just, they flipped the wave in it. So when the signs, we have now the waves in the bottom. And it's just to try to make them stick out.
What's the difference in the prices, Sid?
I'll show you, tell you, run it down the back. So these ones are 150, and these ones are 110. But if you buy 50 or more than nine types, if you buy 50 more of these, they're 121. So that wouldn't include any posts or anything, or install. Mostly go on.
Posts are our plan.
No, we'll put separate posts, we'll do a green post, so we have blue posts now with blue signs. So we'd like to do a green post with a green sign, which doesn't stand out entirely different. So, well, that's kind of what we're thinking, that's what we discussed. So, we have, passed a couple of different options, like I said. We could try to put this into the beautification if we apply for it this year, and see if we get, you know, get 50% funding to pay for part of it. And then the businesses would just pay the other portion of the signage. Right, that's what we'd offer. They would buy their signs anyway. And I guess the struggle we have is we have businesses putting signs wherever they want, and it's outside of our design by law, we want to call that, right? So, it's, it's like four businesses come on, we have signs just where they're not supposed to be.
Yeah.
I think it is, so, yeah, something like that.
Some of them are temporary, and they come down, or a little down, or ever, but some of them are meant to be more permanent signs. But anything within the street, right of ways, are not supposed to be advertising signs unless we're done with all of the town, the people. That's why we don't get the rethearing signs, and then that will go to the merchant side of rethearing signs, and allow, that will be allowed to give more direction on, as to where the businesses are located, especially the ones that are off our main track, right? So, if they're not in downtown core, or at the Newark Street, or Victoria Street, it's in, they're off the, on the side streets, sometimes it's difficult to find your first. And then when you put the side of the town, then the people on the left, left streets and right.
So how would we handle a corner like Racket Road and Victoria, where you're coming from the boat work, and there's a litany of things downtown? Would you just put a business district restaurants in?
Yeah, we have one there now. Doesn't have very many, the little ones have very many signs on it, so, because it's the same idea. So, we might have to have two posts possibly, one might be one before the intersection, one after the intersection, just so they're not, you know, standing side by side. Plus, we also have that little piece there, the old, the old shore break, we have that green space, that actually fit in there well, it would be spaced in about 50 feet. So you could probably put date signs on each post roughly, so that would cover pretty well all the businesses downtown, or pretty close.
Is that sort of the standard size, or, you know, there's some that, they struggle with, Pentecostal church was quite a long name, that they had to try and fit in.
Yeah, this, this is the standard size they've done for them all. Not saying it could go a little bit wider if we had to, I needed an extra, an extra set of letters in the bottom. I wouldn't want to go too big, but I don't, I think the ones didn't really have any negative lens about the ones we have. At first, the letters were a little bit small, then we, they redid them for, they're able to use the same blades, and since then, it's been pretty good. Yeah. So I think, I guess what we're asking, Tom, is just, just the direction, if they're happy with it, then we'll start moving forward to design what, designs the paperwork that we need, and price of the funding that we really need to do the project.
So I guess, if you're looking for the money, I guess you'll agree or move to send this to council, and in that time, do you have a budget?
I probably could have, that's what, if that's what you would like, yeah.
I think basically, we need to have, we need to sit down and put together all the nuts and bolts of the actual program first. And so, and sort of figure out fees and different things like that, and look at different options. So, some spend affair, and that was only advertising signs. So, what we're looking at is similar to the program that the province put out some, a few years ago, about business signs within the, the, and provincial highways. You had to get a permit from them, and it had to be certain signs and certain, certain things, put in certain places, right? But it was allowed, you put in within the bounds of the right of way of, of the, of roads and streets within the, under provincial jurisdiction. But it doesn't, except for about 100 series highways that are allowed, other than billboard signs that you say, that you see, and you put your logos, you see, just outside, every exit, you see the logo for Subway, or McDonald's, or whatever, say, this exit is the next way you're flying.
So is the next council meeting going to be enough time, or would you like the council meeting after that?
I could have two, I think would be good.
Okay, yeah.
I think, put that on business orders. Then we can have Tom like sit down, and we can design something that's ready to go, so, yeah. Just give us that actual little.
We have a motion to take that, too. All sorts.
Yes, Chair, can we, or is this something that will be in our NPS?
It is part of our, it is in our signage policy that's included in our NPS LUV, and that's what we're, we're struggling with, it's having trouble. So, the laws, regulations is already there, we can work program so that they can be put in appropriate places and have control.
Sizes, placement, lighting, et cetera. I mean, that's what we're going to be looking at right away, so.
So a motion to take that, too. Councilor next. So moved. Give us the mayor's second.
Second.
If you can ask for a report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Turn it, motion is carried. All right, your report.
All right, your report. So you'll probably see the new local Digi signs have been installed, and two new directional signs are ready to install, we're just going to wait for a break in the weather to put them up. Did seven locates for Nova Scotia Power and Bell Alliance? You're probably going to see them around a little bit more in the next coming months, in the summer. It sounds like they're going to be upgrading to do more streets within town, within bowls and wires and such, what they tell me. That's a lot of locates for one month for, for a pair of them. Been digging into the transfer station a little bit more, and, and the guidelines, and the annual report, I have copies of last year's, and I'm reviewing them so I can start to looking into this year's. The Digi Waterfishing Assistant, she's really working out well. We've been able to get some, get some things off the ground that we've been trying very hard to, to get off the ground in the last few years, and she's, she's just working out really, really well. It's really taken a lot of stress off of me and the, and the stuff that I haven't been able to get to. Down under equipment, so we have Hep 250, fixed up all the, we have bodywork included on it. The truck's in really good shape, other than there are some bad rust spots on it that need to be fixed. So our intention, the truck is going on 11 years old, but we, we're going to try to, try to make it a 15-year truck, because it has been a, been a good, good vehicle. It's only been 168,000 kilometers on it, so I just don't see the point to throw it into the road, and Tom and I discussed it, and, you know, a little bit of money spent on bodywork as well, worth, well worth it. Down to the transfer station, the numbers have decreased, but they are only open three days a week now, and it kind of corresponds to last, last December numbers, they're really, really close. And the last thing I have, I did, I finished my course through the Ohio State University of Open Learning and Career Development, and it was preliminary governance and management procedure. It was a, it was a great course, I learned a lot, different, different ways of communication, how meetings are, meetings are properly run, and also how to make proper recommendations to the CAO and council for, for purchases and stuff. And I really think it's going to be beneficial for me and the public works department, and just the organization as a whole, so I can understand things better how they're run. It was a good course, and I'm looking forward to taking some more in the future, so. That's everything I have.
Are there any questions for the Director of Public Works? On his report? Or motion to accept his report? So we can answer what, second.
Second.
We are.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Okay, Director of Finance, Mr. Ray.
Okay, so there's, there's two reports. The first one is everything except for the financial statements, or financial statements to date, so I'll just go over that one first. So, the tax sale process, we started out notice of tax sale was sent to three property owners on November 14th. I think one is likely going to pay off the balance before the tax sale, and we can do good headed, head roads on that, inroads on that. And one's likely going to be purchased at the tax sale by an adjacent owner, so that just leaves one that's really unknown, and may end up going to tax sale, we're not, we have to see. So, we have also run into two properties that were not taken to tax sale because they had payment agreements, payment arrangement agreements in place, but two of them have now breached their agreements. And so, we sat down with the CAO, and the tax clerk, and myself, and basically, we came up with, we're going to, a letter has been sent out saying, okay, you must honor the agreements, we don't want to go to tax sale right now. From now on, if one more payment is missed, then you will be taken to tax sale. So we, we hope that those two continue, well, start making all of the payments required by their agreements. The MGA allows us to suspend, suspend tax sale as long as they have an agreement in place, and we're in good standing with the agreement. And we'll have to see how long that goes. Hopefully, they'll pay them until the balances are done. If not, we'll have to look at the timing and see if we need a second tax sale, or if it just gets picked up in following year's tax sale. So the Mountain Street ICIP grant, that was the large one, total grant 1.7 million. We've now spent enough to qualify for the entire grant, and paid enough, basically all the work done, we're still waiting for a couple invoices. But we're waiting in the province to pay us $960,000 that was claimed in October. Apparently, their software system is holding them up. That's costing us about $3,100 a month in lost interest, and our cash is getting very tight for the first time in the almost 20 years that I've been here. I don't think we're going to need bridge financing, but it's possible that we would. Wouldn't be a problem, but just a shame that that would cause us to have to go borrow money. Electronic funds transfer, that just really came up to be an issue because of the postal strike, and we started to look at, do we want to make our payments to our vendors by ETFs? We looked at it, looked at the cost, the costs don't seem to justify the benefits for the few number of vendors that would like to be paid that way. So we don't recommend that we go forward with it at this point. The next one is benevolity. Benevolity is, it's a not-for-profit that helps organizations manage corporate giving, such as large banks, they, they'll use it, and they look to their benevolity database to see, who can we give our money to? Who can we give our charitable donations to? So the town's now registered, and we've registered projects within there, so the Dr. Roy Harding Memorial Queen Street Look Office registered, and the Vignary Community Gardens. And the RBC, in fact, who uses benevolity, and owns benevolity, has, we've received a $1,500 donation from them in honor of their volunteer teams for the community gardens. We also set up our direct pod, so we won't lose the $120 fee next time, when someone wants to use benevolity. WCB contractors, subcontractors. So as I mentioned before, we've been audited, being audited by WCB for a four-year period, 21 through 2024, I guess it's almost five years. And so their initial assessment found that we underreported the wages on the subcontractors, and their, their assessment came up with us owing $14,000. Most of this, well, there are no penalties or interest assigned at this point, and I don't think there's going to be. So this is money we would have had to pay. We missed it, I guess my fault, we had a process going. It was, subcontractors were being reported. Somehow it got lost in the process, and we were filing our WCB returns without subcontractor amounts on them. So if we hire a subcontractor, they're one or two minutes off, they often don't have WCB. If they're on our property, we need to add their, their labor and pay WCB for those people. So, we've gone through it, we think their assessment was incorrect in a number of ways, and we'll probably end up paying about $10,000, but again, that's money that we should have paid in the past, anyway. And we've updated our process. And we've updated our processes so that we don't, don't, uh, miss that in, in the future and, uh, make sure that we get them updated. So we have a data, database going well, we're using the WCB portal to make sure that we don't, uh, don't mess that. We talked a bit about some units at the management meeting, some municipalities say, if you don't have WCB, we don't hire you. I don't think we're in that position, I think everybody in the management team was thinking, we're in a small community, there are a lot of one and two-man con, subcontractors or contractors that we hire. I don't think that's the right route to take, like an HRM would say, you have WCB coverage or we don't hire you. Um, I don't think we should take that, that route, so, uh, we're talking about the CAO, how to go forward on that.
So, so what kind of contractors do you already have, what, what projects?
Uh, Keith Weagle Contracting, Kevin Roddy Electrical, uh, Bradley Isles Plumbing, uh, if there's lots of the small ones. If they're one or two man shops, they don't have WCB.
So when you, when you're a contractor and you have less than two employees, you don't have to pay for it?
Less than three, so three, yeah, three or more, you, you have to have it.
Yeah. So when they violate, so they have to report us with WCB?
Yeah, if, if they've set foot on our property, that's the key, that labor needs to go through our WCB. Somebody's got to pay the WCB is what there's, is what WCB is saying. And so, and, and if there is risk, if those individuals get hurt, it will affect our WCB rate. Not, not theirs obviously, because they don't have WCB. So there is some risk in hiring contractors who don't carry WCB.
So neither of us discrepancy too, you, up until a year or so ago, you actually filed that manually. And now they're trying to upload mine and you're, well, switching home, why does this? Have they got all that worked in?
A lot of it's working, um, all of our, when we pay us a contractor now, uh, Dan basically goes into the system, sees that they're already in our list. And, uh, they're all, they'll all be cleared. If somebody, um, is not in good standing, we actually get a, an, a memo now, we'll get a, well, I'll get an email and go on to the site and it'll tell us that we're not in good standing. I found a, we weren't in good standing because we had the audit. So, um, but now that we've got this process going, if any of those regular subcontractors, um, don't pay. And we did have, in this audit, we actually do have one significant one. We made the assumption, our mistake, that they had WCB and they did have WCB coverage at one point, but then they, uh, somehow lapsed and they're not in good standing. They've talked to them verbally and they've agreed to get themselves back in good standing and get us a letter so that we don't have to pay on those wages. But, uh, just another reminder to us, even if you see, we have a subcontractor with eight employees, don't just assume we need the piece of paper and it's become. Or, well, sorry, it's online, and when Dan's saying that, he checks WCB portal and we see if they have WCB.
So you've been doing this for quite a while, can you move back any further in twenty-one to twenty-four if they decide to?
Uh, they can, but we were actually doing it correctly before this. Like, I don't know, I don't know where, where it dropped. That, that's partly my fault for not reviewing that monthly remittance that was going in. But it would normally be accounts payable, uh, gives the invoice amounts or the labor amounts to payroll, payroll files WCB. And the process was working and somehow it just, it just stopped working, so. Uh, my, my mistake, I should have been reviewing those and didn't review. But we do have a good, good process in place now. And no interest or penalties, this is amounts we would have had to repay. Uh, let's see, active transportation, I just mentioned this just because I was so involved in the active transportation file, uh, initially. And, uh, there are large grants out there, we won't be able to take part in this because we don't have costs. But they would cover, this grant is big, it would cover up sixty percent of the cost, say if we wanted to do what's in the active transportation plan to have, active transportation lanes from the ferry on the water side, all the way into Racket, all the way in Racket Road into, to Archie's, to Carleton Street. Um, so I, I guess it's just in there just as a reminder and just for discussion with the management team that at some point, maybe we can try to, uh, get one of the other grants and, uh, get pre-designed toss done. And, and always when we do capital, uh, budgeting, it's always another thing, how much of a priority is it for council? So when we start doing capital budgeting, we need to hear those things, yea or nay, is it a priority? Do you want us to go get the, the grant for seventy-five percent of the cost of a pre-design? So then we can go after the big ones, please. Um, rental units, um, they're up to date or temporary suspension, mutually suspended from January, March, like for, uh, data. And other items, uh, just some reports. And yeah, nothing, nothing major here, I think, uh, one you may deal with later, later tonight. So that's that report, second is the.
Report, can you move on, is there any questions on that report?
I actually, on that active transportation, um, project, this, if it's from the ferry terminal to the shore, to the Racket Longshore Road?
Good.
Is that something you'd coordinate with the municipality of Dignity and?
Yeah, and I think it's actually a good thing because the feds love to see participation, they love to see two municipalities together. And it also has the pines, so it also has First Nations.
Okay.
Potentially involved. Um, so there's, there's three sort of boxes ticked that help with the feds.
Hopefully they get a good amount and we get a good amount, not all the one amount.
And all do it together, be done, hopefully do, I guess that's all to be, to be determined.
Hmm.
But, uh, but hopefully if we, one project, then we would, I assume, be lead, um, but it would certainly be partnered.
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
And that can be, details worked out.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions, just in your tax sale and the other two properties that are breached. Uh, have you discussed some sort of a timeline and, and what's the maximum amount of time that you would let that go?
Um, well, right now the letters have gone out, so we don't have a, a breach yet on those. Um, it's, we'll be talking with the CAO when, when this comes up, when we're either in tax sale position or somebody has breached, that's when I go to the CAO. And we can make those decisions. Um, in these two cases, it's kind of their first warning. Um, yes, they did breach it, yes, we could go straight to tax sale. Uh, the three of us talked about it, the, uh, CAO, Harold or, or tax clerk and myself, and, uh, that's where we are now.
Process.
Yep, so, so now, once, if they breach, uh, again their agreement, uh, we'll be chatting with the CAO and see, are we going straight to tax sale? Or are we, how far along are we? Are we at a point where, hey, we're planning for next year's tax sale anyway? So we're going to lump them in there.
Okay. Other question is with thirty-one hundred dollars, lots of revenue month because of the province's problem, not that it would be. That it would be a decision, Rob's feel?
I don't think they'd look kindly at us sending them a bill for money that they're granting to us. They, they may, uh, I don't really want to get down that road, I just wanted to, I politely pointed out to them, very politely.
Aware.
That they are aware that we're losing thirty-one hundred dollars a month.
Right.
Yeah. And I asked, so do you have any better idea of when you could have picks? Nope, we're working on it, so at least they're aware of that.
They're not.
Yeah. Nothing, well, even the million dollars to them is not that big.
Operating capital.
Okay, so the statement of operations is attached, I know it's difficult to see much at that high level, but I do go through it in a very detailed level. If anyone is ever interested, um, I can certainly show them the detailed level and even go through it as my notes attached, but I don't want to clog the meeting here with, uh, three hundred GL accounts and the analysis. So what should have been on my report is the handout. And really, what it's showing here is anything negative is something that's pushing us towards a deficit. Anything positive is something that's pushing us, pushing us towards having a surplus. And I try to look, what's the net effect? And we're at December, so we're at the end of the third quarter of the fiscal year, we're getting a better idea. The bottom line here says a surplus of seventy-seven thousand, certainly that's not written stone, this is just best guess at this point. But it gives us an idea that there's nothing major in here, we haven't had any two hundred thousand dollar water main breaks on, on street doors that we pass the paths. So that's looking good, that's basically on a five million dollar budget, that's basically saying we're, we're posted on budget. The biggest single thing in here is the deep transfer tax, uh, we're going to commit about seventy thousand probably above what we budgeted. And it's a shot in the dark to budget it each year, each year we talk about it and every year we're wrong. Unless there's any, uh, questions there or wondering the capital budget?
Could you, just the BIC counselor, like, just maybe we could change that heading to, to this normal?
Um, yeah, I guess their title always was counselor, BIC counselors, I don't know, would we not call them that anymore?
No, we'll just reserve this out of the council.
Oh, it's supposed to be spelled the other way.
Oh.
It's not a counselor as in, uh, like counselor, it's counselor as in legal counselor or anybody given counseling profession, right? So it's a miss.
So I can, are they even changed, is their title different? I don't know, but.
Yeah, it's counselor, not counselor as in.
No, I just wonder if it was something even other than counselor.
No, that's what, that's what they refer to, uh, industry-wide, as the BIC counselors.
I remember my numbers, yeah, I remember my numbers, ability, not my spell. So, yeah, unless there's any questions on that, I'll go over to the capital budget. And the, the capital budget really is self-explanatory, there are notes, uh, beside it. Um, and hopefully it made it in there, I don't see it. Oh, here we are, yes, it did. Yeah, a little bit hard to see unless you rotate it, it's really, I don't want to go into it in any detail, it's just, anything green is new from what I've reported to you in the past. And it's really, are there any questions? Are there any wondering why are we not further along on a particular project or why are we a bit over on a particular project? So just to provide something for questions, for discussion. So are there, anyone have any, any questions?
Uh, maybe some clarity on line thirty-eight. Um, because the comments have looked to be very, very close on, but it is not suddenly under budget, but it looks like the actual is already over the budget.
Sure.
Maybe the comment was in before.
Yeah, so, so the total cost of the budget will, is supposed to command just under four point one million. I accumulated all the costs on the town side first, I haven't allocated anything to the water commission yet. So, um, I really, I'm trying to get a feel for how are we compared to that four point one at this point in time? And we still have invoices to come in all, all, obviously. So, yeah, the town's share is only two point seven million, but we have the water commission. And on some of the sewer, we even have the municipality paying thirty-five percent of sewer costs, so there's two others sharing those costs.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Here none, I'll wait for approval of those financial reports. Some, you, second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Weir.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very many, most she's careful. Thank you very much. Uh, now the grant coordinator.
All right, uh, a number of applications went in, the Growth Renewal Infrastructure Development Program application, which is the provincial one, was submitted. Uh, we have the Canada Summer Jobs applications go in, which is a federal program for our summer students. And the African Heritage Month, uh, little grant that they give us for putting on the African Heritage Month program, which is on Thursday, was also submitted. I am in the throes of the Canadian Housing Infrastructure Fund and met with the CAO on Friday and hope to get that in, uh, this week. I also had a discussion that just happened today with the Director of Public Works, that we hope to bring forward to, uh, council in regards to a, the access, community accessibility grant. So that's making the, the town buildings accessible, better, better accessible. I've had my head in the sand for the last three weeks, so that's why we're a little bit, uh, behind, but we'll want to bring something to council, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant where they give half and, and we pay perhaps, we'll want to bring it forward, the, the thing that we want to do specifically, and Ed and I talked about, uh, specifically things in this building, making doorways wider and access to washrooms and those kinds of things, so. I will take that one on the chin, that was my fault for, uh, not being on board, but we'll get to something for council. Um, did a few tweaks on the website, um, I have now moved, uh, upstairs, so I won't bother Leslie anymore. And, uh, her and I have been working on the African Heritage Month event, which is happening on Thursday, invites went out. I, hopefully everybody got what I sent and should be, uh, I think we're going to get quite a turnout this year.
Any questions for the grant coordinator? Seeing them, we will look for a motion to accept his report. So, you, secondary?
Second.
Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, now we'll go into correspondence, African Heritage Month launch, which, uh, Rob just alluded to. Leslie, who's, Grant, who's going to speak?
We just kind of wondered if we might everyone, if they were coming in.
Okay, that's this Thursday?
Yeah.
Uh, the, one o'clock is the, uh?
Yes, one o'clock at Disney Station.
Disney Station, so if you're available, please make yourself available to drop in.
The, uh, just as addition, the Deputy Minister of African Nova Scotia Affairs will actually be here to speak as well, which is, uh, from what I understand, a pretty big thing. So.
Great. Okay. Uh, H. G2, sorry, Emergency Management Letter, I probably have notes that went out with the Nova Scotia NSFM today as well, same letter. Do you want to speak a little bit about that too?
Yeah. But basically it just outlines, uh, the, a little bit of the community department and about the activation of the provincial emergency operations centers. And what each of those levels, three levels, and what each of those levels actually means, and that is poweries that are requesting that. When they do get to level two, which is, uh, partial activation, when there is a moderate event expected or if a current situation escalates to the point where it involves more communities or, uh, greater risk to the public. Uh, we are required at that point to, um, activate our EOCs as well, locally. So, which is basically, um, my estimation, another data, one of the problems, put costs on municipalities. I mean, the old system always worked. The, uh, the other, other thing is that, uh, they said that it cannot be activated, uh, virtually. But it's basically has been what Dignity Reno has operated on, uh, the last few years. Uh, when we have a major snowstorm or hurricane or whatever, uh, we sort of activate it, we don't call any staff in. We just mon, monitor what's going on and have everybody on the ready. So if we do get hit hard and it looks like we're going to get it, then we will actually activate. Otherwise, we just correspond by phone or email with the coordinator and the two CAOs. And, uh, then until the decision is made that we need to. Now they're saying we can't do that, we have to, have to activate our EOC. This means we have to call our staff in and, and be on standby. Actually, Ryan from the EOC, so that's why I called it another that one, because it's going to. So that's why I called it another that one, because it's going to cost more, more money to operate that way.
You have a chance to review that, and as I've emailed them earlier today, break down the map, have the problems solved as well. Business, H one, F C M conference attendance Ottawa May the twenty-ninth to June the first of this year.
Yeah, I actually, I actually brought it up. Reason being is, once the schedule goes online, which probably this month, day trips and field trips fill up really quick. So I guess our policy is that the C A O Mayor and two counselors are able to go to the province. So if you're interested in going to that, let Leslie know. And it's easy to cancel rooms and cancel flights, but it's not easy to get on those day trips. In the past, we've gone to, you know, public gardens and stuff, which we have a community garden, so we learned a lot on those field trips and those are really good to go to. So if you're interested in doing that, I suggest you let her know if you want to go or not. And I'll keep an eye on the, on the website of F C M to see what's on the agenda as well, so we're on it.
Did I forget that information that came from the, that came in the email in the package?
Problem.
Yeah. Avalanche, brother, you know, Seattle. Okay, next is the draft administration policy, cultural respectful acknowledgement. You have that in your package, two zero two four dash four. It's quite self-explanatory, purpose policy statement, something that we talked about a little bit in other meetings. This is now the actual policy that Tom has come up with. And we'll do a discussion. And he comes. Again, it's not something that we would do at every meeting that we go to, every committee meeting that we have, just specific ones that's outlined.
So from events.
Events.
I'd say they're both written well, they're, they're all shorter than the full, and but the whole thing of the problem, so if I remember, often times uses, so might make it a little more straightforward for whoever's representing the town to be able to give that, that acknowledgement.
It's a good explanation too, of what it actually means.
Yeah.
I guess we need a motion to take this to council.
Yeah.
All moves that would take administrative policy, two zero two four dash zero four, culturally respectful acknowledgement policy, to council.
Thank you very much, Councilor Corbett, I think second.
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just making one comment. The, the policy, actual policy number will probably end up being twenty-two-five dash right? And, but when, the time that it was being drafted, it was still in twenty-two-four. But we usually, the policy is on, we adopted, maybe it was adopted, not drafted, so.
Change that in minutes now?
So that's, that will be changed for those councils.
Okay.
So the policy will, they will get the policy number.
All the questions? All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Contrary on it? The I's have it, motion's carried. Next is the draft administration policy, property tax reduction for Digby Bargain bin in your package, this certainly. And this, again, as the C A O explained earlier, when the property was sold, that policy got reset on that particular business. And now if Matt asked us, we're saying that we used to provide to, when it's a different number.
Do you, do you still need me for the rest of the meeting? No.
So the, the policy basically is the tax reduction, so basically it's, would be to rate that never be paying the residential rate as opposed to the commercial rate. Still be paying taxes, and that's it, because they need to provide a service to the community and they're not-for-profit group, but they may apply for this reduction.
All move that we take administrative policy, two zero two five dash zero one, property tax reduction policy for the Digby Bargain bin to council.
Thank you, Councilor Corbett, I have a second there today.
Second.
Thank you. Here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary on it? The I's, motion carried. Next is the Digby one-three-five, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so this year marks our one-hundred-and-third-fifth-year anniversary of our corporation. So I've put together a proposal for a community picnic. We held up the Fisher's Memorial Park, and the rain site will be at the Digby Curling Club. Again, marks our one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth anniversary. The last one was in two thousand and fifteen, which is actually ten years ago, of course, when we had a new clock that we put in down here on Water Street. We had some lapel pins made as well, also golf shirts for council and staff, and we also gave the merchants permission to use the logo to sell some merchandise. This year, I'm proposing, again, at the Fisher's Memorial Park, it'll be a partnership with some activities with the Digby Area Tourism Association, who are planning a sixty-day Mont Louis, as well as working with the music on the promenade schedule with their summer event. So we start at one o'clock with music, Dad is doing the Mont Louis painting lesson, and we'll have some children's activities such as space painting, bouncy toys and things like that from the arena. At one-thirty, two-thirty, we'll have a council barbecue, similar to what we do at Canada Day with hot dogs, cake and beverages. It will only be an hour though, so it won't be a strong three-hour for a barbecue. At two-thirty, we'll have the official ceremony. We piped in by Mary Signe, town prior, council invited guests, the M P, M L A, Warden, R C M P, and there will also be actors in the periodic costume from the eighteen hundreds. The town prior will then read the proclamation, welcome from myself with the presentation of pins, greetings from the M P, M L A, Warden, and then the cake cutting, and then from three to four, the music and activities will continue. I do have in the package a proposed budget, and I'm asking that we take the council to approve the cost of twenty-eight-hundred dollars for this celebration. Any questions? Any input? Anybody want to add things to it? By all means, I don't have a budget of twenty-eight hundred bucks, so.
Did you want Mr. Mayor to strike an ad hoc committee to help you with that? Or would you like to discuss that later?
I know we can discuss that later. Mostly, mostly it will run by itself, other than us doing the, so all the activities we put on by those different groups, so there's not really a lot of work for us other than the barbecue.
What was the most popular game in Digby one-hundred-and-thirty-five years ago?
I'm not sure. Probably something to do with musket balls, musket balls and cannonballs, probably.
Okay. Well, I just saw the award, and I figured there goes something very traditional, take something from one-hundred-and-thirty-five years back?
Any questions?
Yes, yes, we have.
Yes, we need a motion to take that to council, because I want to spend money.
No motion.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor, second? What? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those votes. The I's have it, motion is carried. All right, trade show event.
So again, we seem to be on a ten-year mission here. So ten years ago, we had a trade show at the Fire Hall, and it was a pre-budget trade show, and it involved everyone that we give money to. So Public Service was there, the Fire Department, R C M P, Senior Safety, all the groups that we give money to there. And so it's a good opportunity for the residents to come and see what our different departments are doing, how they operate. The Finance Director also did a nice presentation where it showed the big pie and how much the R C M P costs and stuff, so it is prior to budget. So it will give residents a chance to go around the trade show, check out what we're spending here, what we're spending there, and any input before we do approve the budget. We'll give the residents an opportunity to say, well, how come we're paying so much for this? Can we cut here? Can we cut there? So it gets the residents and business people who actually don't get a vote for council to have a say in what, what our budget's going to be. Counselor Foot is the master of trade shows, doing spring and the summer, so he offered to help with that together, and we thank you very much. Aye, thank you very much. And I guess the question now is, do we want to do it? And I'd like to see it annually or every two years at least, so any thoughts to that? And if you'd like to do it, we'll make a motion to do it, and Counselor Foot and I will get on it. Any questions?
I think it's a good idea. We should probably reach out to all the various stakeholders to make sure that they'll be able to have a representative there, but otherwise lovely idea and great to be able to bring everybody forward at the same time, so folks can see what we're spending our money on.
Believe the other idea here was to have these organizations able to draw up volunteers at the same time?
Yeah, I think they'd do that as well.
Yeah.
Do you include the organizations we could grant to?
Yes, we would, yeah.
Yeah. Counselor.
Possibly we could add something for the kids as well, maybe a station where they can color or something fun.
Yeah.
Recreation, under recreation.
They could have stairs and fire trucks.
Whoa!
Can I do that?
I guess we'll leave it to the mayor and Counselor Foot to come back to us if they need something else.
Yeah.
Sure, lady, help that we could provide this.
Counselors too.
Sure.
H six, strategic planning session wrap-up is on the digby cloud. Staff just wanted us to know that it was there, if you'd like to read it, and prior to the next thing we're going to do with it, to involve getting a planner to sit here to put that together.
So, so what we did today is, we went through our, our planning session, we had on December seventh. Tom, Leslie, I sat here for hours upon hours, went through all the ideas that we had, they're all prioritized. Some are over one, some one year, some four years, some are tomorrow. So take a look at it. Any changes in that you see, let us know. And I don't think we need to be new for it necessarily, but I think go through those and you touch on everybody's, everybody's things. And it was very positive that we're giving direction to staff and to the different departments at the Town Hall that what we'd like to see happen over the next four years. Things like sidewalk's are put in there for this year as well. So, yeah, take a look at it, and if we missed something, let us know, but I think it was a good, good session and some good results.
What folder is that under in the, on the cloud?
No specific folder. Just the cloud, you know, from councils, you'll see it.
Okay.
Toward the bottom, just.
Just for the new counselors coming in, that we just kind of were on the tail end of it. We've been at that for over a year. As the old council, it was a very long process. We went through a lot of meetings and a lot of discussions. Nice to see that coming from you, and really to put everything into top of the cap. Perfect. Okay, great. H seven, African heritage gala table. Leslie, we have a table?
Yes, we have a table for gatherings. It is next month, I don't have the exact date, but.
How many seats do you have at the table?
Thirty-eight seats at the table.
February fifteenth.
Yeah. If you're interested, let us know.
Event starts at six-thirty, it's long, it's Digby Hall, most likely. Generally, very well, very well attended, but had lost, last couple of years. Artisan relations, a table, I think we've shared with the town the last, last two years. So Ben and, Ben and his wife and Sarah, where I watched everyone, Counselor Turnbull and Sandra. So, yeah, if you guys fill the council table, hopefully we sit somewhere near as a R B seat.
All right, that brings us to the end of our list of our agenda items, besides going to the camp for the evening discussion. I'd like to thank the general public for coming. It's nice to see faces here for a change, and I know it's not always exciting, it's pretty dry, but it's business, it has to be done. It's your, your tax office. Thank you very much. Okay, just a couple minutes here.
What could we bring down the big ship from?
I don't know. I guess we need a motion to go into camera. Motion, someone's in the corner, second?
Sure.
Mayor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you.